Welcome to the October tenth, two thousand seventeen regular meeting of the planning of the Troy Planning Commission. warnings of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the planning commission. The roles and responsibilities of the planning commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes planning commissions. The commission is comprised of nine members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. The other individuals seated at the table this evening are representatives of the city's planning department, the city attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Carlisle Hortman and Associates. If you wish to address the planning commission, please come forward when recognized and provide your name and address on the silent screen. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the planning commission, not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, tablets, PDAs, or any other devices that might disrupt this meeting please either be placed in silent mode or be turned off. The roll call is Zarnik, please.
Mr. Abkhedian?
Here.
Ms. Cruz?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Faison?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Corrin?
Here.
Ms. Cooper?
Here.
Mr. Sanzika?
Here.
Mr. Tagle? Ms. Howell?
Coram present, item number two on the agenda approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please? Mr. Carl, um... Faison. Faison, I'm sorry. Seconded by Ms. Cooper. Roll call, please.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corrin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Abkhedian?
Yes. Third item on the agenda's approval of the minutes for the September twelfth, two thousand seventeen meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes, please? Mr. Sanzika, seconded by Mr. Edmonds. Roll call, please, Ms. Zarnik.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corrin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Abkhedian?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Item number four on the agenda is public comment for items not on the agenda tonight. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to an item that is not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we will move to item number five on the agenda. Conditional rezoning. Public hearing, conditional rezoning, application file number CRJP CR two zero one six dash zero zero two. Proposed IHOP restaurant and retail east side of Rochester, north of Big Beaver. One zero three three Urban Crest, three one three zero Rochester. Three one three two through three one four two Rochester. Section twenty-three from R one E, one family residential district to GB general business district. Mr. Carlisle.
Mr. Carlisle is going to present the report. I just want to say so to reduce confusion. These two sheets are what we last saw of the project. It's been revised since this time, but I was asked by the planning commissioner just to compare and contrast. So these are old.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening to the planning commission, to the public. The applicant tonight is seeking to join three separate parcels to redevelop one of the existing buildings on the site to be an IHOP and a retail building. And the second building on site will be demolished and rebuilt as a Panda Express drive-through. There are three actions that are being requested tonight. The first is a conditional rezoning of ten thirty-three Urban Crest, which is located in the southeast corner of the development, to be rezoned from R one E to GB. The purpose of that is to allow for parking to be located on that site. The applicant has noted a condition of approval of their conditional rezoning is the site in itself. The second item for consideration is a drive-through, is a special use for a drive-through for a Panda Express, which will be located in this, on this parcel, this location. And the third action is for preliminary site plan approval for the development in total. We do note that all three parcels will be combined into one parcel moving forward as part of the development. If, as recommended tonight by the planning commission, the special use and the preliminary site plan approval will be contingent upon the planning, or I'm sorry, on the city council passing the proposed rezoning. So just for background material, the first parcel, excuse me, is this location. It's currently zoned GB, and the applicant is proposing to redevelop this existing building, cut off a portion of it, but redevelop it for the IHOP and a commercial building. The second parcel also is zoned GB. The applicant proposes to remove this structure and construct a new Panda Express drive-through. The third parcel is currently zoned R one E. Applicant proposes to combine that with these two parcels and use that for parking for both uses. This application was last before the planning commission, almost exactly a year ago to the date. During that discussion, there were three major items that came up for consideration and discussion by the planning commission. The first was the future use of the drive-through. At that time, it was unknown. What the applicant was proposing was to reuse the existing building on site, which is the Pita Pit building, and convert that to a drive-through. However, they did not have a tenant for that building, and so he was not able to provide any elevations for the planning commission to look at. Since that time, the applicant has found a tenant. It's proposed to be the Panda Express with a drive-through. Again, that drive-through requires special use. However, we do note the applicant has provided the required stacking spaces and has met all the bulk requirements for the GB district. The second issue of major discussion, Mr. Shama, you can move ahead to the plans if you see fit.
I see fit.
The second issue that was under discussion with the planning commission was an issue of parking or an issue of lack of parking. The planning, at the last, the last plan reviewed by the planning commission, the applicant was significantly short of parking by approximately thirty or forty, thirty-five spaces in their previous submittal. Since that time, they have added twelve new spaces to the building by reconfiguring the site. In addition, they have reduced their parking demand by twenty spaces by reducing the size of the retail building and the IHOP restaurant. So now, by ordinance, they are required to provide one hundred and fifty-five spaces, and they are providing one hundred and twenty spaces. So again, they're short by thirty-five spaces. We do note that they have provided a parking study. The parking study was reviewed by OHM, the engineering consultant firm of the city. In the parking study, they did find that at peak demand, the maximum parking spaces was one hundred and nineteen spaces. So they are providing one hundred and twenty, which is in excess of one hundred and nineteen. The parking study was reviewed by OHM, and they did find and agree with the final conclusion of that parking study and did note that IHOP has unique characteristics of its operations that would lend itself to allow for only one hundred and nineteen spaces as opposed to a normal restaurant, which again would require two spaces per seat. So with that being said, OHM does recommend the parking deviation with the caveat that it's tied specifically to the IHOP restaurant. Any change of tendency of that restaurant, they would have to redo a parking study and potentially provide more parking in the future for that bigger site. We do note that the Panda Express has provided one loading space, which is located in the rear of the building. We do know that the IHOP does not have a loading space, a dedicated loading space, and so we ask the applicant to justify the lack of part of loading space and explain why they don't need one for the IHOP as opposed to a Panda Express, why they would need one. The third discussion that the planning commission discussed was that of elevations. Again, the previous tenant was not identified, so there were no elevation provided for the Panda Express building. However, they have submitted elevations, and we do conclude in the elevations that the applicant is proposing a significant amount of EPIS material, one that typically we do not support as a primary material, especially as a highly invisible location such as this on Rochester Road. So we've asked the applicant to either consider an additional or change of material to EPIS or explain the use of EPIS as part of their own program. We have reviewed the proposed IHOP. They are using a mix of glass, metal, stone, limestone, and hardy board. We do find these to be rather handsome elevations, and we do consider that the Panda Express should carry some of those elements over into the, what the IHOP is doing and carry them over to be consistent with what the IHOP is doing. So those are the three main issues. We do feel like the applicant has addressed the two main ones, which are the parking issue as well as the future use of that Panda Express building. However, we do note that there are a few minor issues that can be explained by the applicant. That includes a lack of a loading space for the IHOP building. We do note that there's a note on the landscape plan that notes Canton Township, so we just request that that be replaced with the city of Troy. And lastly, the applicant did submit a photometric lighting plan. However, it did not comply with ordinance requirements, so we do request that they do submit a lighting plan. So in summary, we do support the proposed development. We are recommending approval with all three items provided. The applicant can clearly address the issue of Panda Express drive-through as well as the conditions that are noted in the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlisle. Any questions for Mr. Carlton? Mr. Carlton.
Ben, what was the short parking shortfall in the initial submission?
Let me look it up and then I can get back to you.
Because you said thirty-five, but that's in the current.
Current was thirty-five. I think it was fifty-five, but let me, it was significantly higher than what they currently had. But I'll look that up.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hudson.
The manager plan with the Rochester corridor suggested that they consider innovative stormwater management. I saw nothing in their material on that, so I'd like to know what they proposed and if it's not imaginative, what would be the possibilities if they wanted to change?
I can briefly answer it from a staff standpoint, and then I'll let the applicant actually address it from their application standpoint. We did note that in our report and have noted it in both reviews. The applicant can address why they were able or not able to do that. We didn't see anything innovative in our review of what they've done with stormwater management. However, the applicant may have an answer for that.
Okay. Ms. Cruz.
I'm curious, what is unique about IHOP that would make their parking shortage appropriate under the circumstances of being OHM?
So when OHM looks and reviews developments that have a mix of parking, so there's three different uses on this. One of the things they note with the IHOP is their parking demand is much earlier in the day than those of a traditional standard restaurant. So the parking demand for IHOP is going to be much earlier in the day, and so the other parking can be utilized at later periods of the day. So they find it unique to IHOP in their hours of operation when their parking is the most demanded, when it's least demanded for other locations. And Mr. Baker does, his company manages and owns a number of IHOP restaurants, so you can explain that in more depth from the application operation standpoint.
Mr. Edmonds.
Ben, can you point out, maybe with the pointer, can you access the Panda drive-through through either entrance, one off of Urban Crest as well as the one off Rochester?
Can you do the site plan, Mr. Baker? So Panda Express building is located in this location. The drive-through is located here. To get to the drive-through off of Rochester, you would circle around and come through this drive aisle and circle around here. From Urban Crest, you'd come in and turn and go right in that location.
So the...
The second, third option would be could, off Rochester, you could come around here and look around this way.
Oh. But the shortest one is actually off of Urban Crest, then?
Shortest one is off of Urban Crest, correct.
Mr. Corrin.
Yeah, again, referring back to the parking now. Is a conditional rezoning, say that only IHOP, what if that IHOP goes away in ten years or twenty years from now and another restaurant comes in with a different mix of hours? How does that impact our parking?
OHM's recommendation is that a condition of approval actually be that the parking deviation is tied to the specific IHOP use itself. If it changes hands, turns into another restaurant, that requirement, the new, whoever the new tenant is, would have to either provide a parking study that justifies their parking or they would have to provide additional parking to be reviewed by the planning commission.
Okay, thanks.
Just what's, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was curious, like, what's the trigger that causes that to happen? So that IHOP closes or whatever, the new restaurant comes in there. Do we, like, monitor the new leases or less or to know it's a different restaurant?
We do, and we do this even for developments that don't receive a parking deviation. So anytime a new use comes in, we make sure that there's parking based on what the ordinance calls for. And so if there's not, they need to either provide additional parking on site or come to the planning commission in the future for a parking deviation. But yes, it's triggered, typically it's triggered through a building permit process when a change of use.
But a change of use would be a different restaurant.
In this, if it's a condition of approval, this, a change of use could be the, the parking deviation could be tied to this specific tenant of IHOP. So if a Denny's comes in, if a Chick-fil-A comes in, they would have to, they would have to either provide additional parking or provide a parking study that justifies the parking deviation that was granted to IHOP.
So the program that we use to track permits, BSNA, we, if it goes through that, a condition of approval as part of the conditional zoning would be that it has to come back, we would flag that through BSNA. So when anyone submits a permit for a new restaurant, it would be, the flag would come up saying that it requires...
Addition, right. So it's a systematic?
Yes.
Review process we have?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before we ask the applicant to come forward? Now, at this time, the applicant is here. Please take a word and make your presentation.
Reminder, it's a public hearing after that presentation. So, full doctor laser?
Oh, great.
Thank you. Again, members of the commission, my name is John Baker. Company is Brand Growth Incorporated, thirty-six thirty-six Birch. Do you need recite it for your record? Thirty-six thirty-six Birch Street, Newport Beach, California. I'm here representing two companies though tonight. And one is Brand Growth, the developer, and the second is Trinity Restaurant Group. My partner and I actually own and operate both companies. I've been a real estate developer for almost thirty years, primarily focused on small single-tenant or small retail centers. All of them, and all of my development work has been in residential work, no residential work. Over the years, we've, combined, the company has actually close to two thousand employees now, but split between both the real estate company and the restaurant company. We've developed properties in over forty states, and our client list extends from banks, Key Bank is one of our clients, who are preferred developers for specific projects with Chipotle restaurants. Done work with Starbucks, Old Navy, Williams and Sonoma. These are our corporate clients that we've enjoyed over the many years of business. IHOP is, was a client of ours before we became a franchisee and an operator within that brand. We operate restaurants though. The Trinity Restaurant Group portion of the two companies operates restaurants in five states. We started here in Michigan when we bought a handful of stores from IHOP restaurants after quite a story. I'll have a slide to highlight a little bit more of that. But we operate in two brands. In Las Vegas, Nevada, we operate Jack in the Box, also in Southern Utah and in Nashville, Tennessee. And we have only IHOP restaurants here in Michigan. Over the years, with our real estate activity, I know I'm blending these two, but I want you to understand the organization in total. We've managed in excess of three hundred million dollars of corporate spending, our clients' spending on their development activity. Some of that's construction management, some of it's real estate. But blended over three hundred million dollars in the past fifteen years in our development activity. Restaurant company IHOP, or Trinity, is also an award-winning franchisee with both brands, IHOP and Jack in the Box. Specifically to IHOP, why are we here today is kind of a, it's a long story. I'll try to be brief. In two thousand four, my partner and I, after starting our business in two thousand one, our first client was IHOP Corporate. They were also a prior employer of mine. In two thousand two, two thousand three, we were anxious to try to, my partner and I had the brilliant idea wanting to go in the restaurant business. We'd always been into corporate side of that, but we wanted to run them for ourselves. And frankly, there was a blend, and the reason I'm talking to you about Brand Growth and Trinity is there was a blend between those desires. We wanted to be able to develop restaurants and then actually own and operate the restaurant on the property that we developed. So Trinity Restaurant Group was an outgrowth of our client relationship with IHOP, and it started, the operation business started in two thousand four. Prior to that, IHOP Restaurants had abandoned the Midwest sometime in the mid to late eighties. I won't go through the whole history of IHOP Corp., but there's, it's an interesting story, and it has to do with their primary core business was never running restaurants. IHOP to this, at this date currently owns and operates no restaurants. That's a change from about a month ago when they sold their last nine restaurants. But nationwide, they have over seventeen hundred restaurants. So they're the traditional franchise model. The primary business of IHOP Corp. as a franchisor was to simply build restaurants. And when they found certain markets were hot and would accept those restaurants, they pursued those. The Midwest was not for much, for many, many years, largely because they ran horrible restaurants in the Midwest. They never quite figured out how to run the restaurants here, so they couldn't develop here, and they walked away from the Midwest, as I said, about in the mid-eighties. One of the last remaining markets was Michigan, Detroit specifically. They operated restaurants here, but they're not an operating company, as I said. They were a franchisor. The restaurants that they operated here for many, many years, for better part of a decade, were horribly managed, and it's a disaster for the brand. They tried to sell the Detroit market. They couldn't get rid of it. Then a couple of knuckleheads from Newport Beach asked them if we could buy them. Those were the five stories that we bought back in two thousand four. Since then, we've developed seven additional restaurants. We're, actually, I think, apologize a little bit, I think we have eight now, new ones, and three that are in development. But more importantly, Trinity Restaurant Group with its alliance to Brand Growth were the exclusive developer for the IHOP brand in about two-thirds of the state. We have about six hundred employees here in Michigan, and our, I don't want you to think that we operate from Newport Beach. Our senior management command staff is based right here. In fact, our vice president of operation lives in Clinton Township, I believe, not far. We're a team that values competition within the group and a lot of community involvement. Bringing those together is a lot of fun to see how, which group can outdo the other on charity and community involvement. But the thing I'm most proud of, and I'm sharing some of this with you because of some concerns that were expressed about our company almost a year and a half ago. We have a, we have a history of giving in this community, and I want you to at least understand how proud we are of it. We opened, when we bought these five restaurants, one of them was a store in Royal Oak. It's still there. It's a tiny little classic old A-frame restaurant. It's less than, right about two thousand feet, maybe twenty-one hundred feet. That store was a train wreck when we bought it. We shut it down, we gutted it to the walls and rebuilt it. We found there were three things that we needed to rebuild of. There was, the building itself was a disaster. It had been abandoned by IHOP, it had never been kept up. So we knew we had to remodel the restaurant. We needed to remodel the employees. There's a significant problem with the employee base, both in attitude and competence and everything else. And it's a little crude to say this, but we also had to redevelop the customer. That IHOP restaurant on Twelve Mile, or on Woodward at Twelve Mile, the only customers we had were the people that saw us while they were going up Woodward Avenue. They weren't coming back for a second visit. And so we had to remodel the customer and become a part of that community in Royal Oak. We're proud of that. In two thousand six, when we reopened that restaurant, we did a charity tie-in with Beaumont Hospital. We asked Beaumont what charity in the area would be significant for them to, you know, try to partner with us on, and it was Children's Medical Network. They're based out of Beaumont for the entire state. Children's Medical Network partnered with us. My brother, my partner's brother was an actor at the time, still is, but he was on a show called Desperate Housewives. It was the number one show on television back in that particular timeframe. Doug came out, he was a part of this charity grand reopening of the Royal Oak IHOP. And we had a great time, and it was a good, successful, and I will even say we accomplished the remodel of restaurants, remodel of employees, and remodel of the customer. We got invited back into the community through that process. But the great part of that story was, that's the first time IHOP as a brand had partnered with Children's Medical Network to date. Now, you may, you may see it on the news, or you may see it on the commercials every year. We do a pancake day. It's a national, designated national holidays, and our day recognition day. IHOP has really sought to own that. And after our work on that two thousand six pancake day, IHOP has gone back and made Children's Medical Network their national charity. And to date, we take, no one's told me I can't take credit for that alliance, so I continue to take credit for the alliance with our group at Trinity. But twenty-seven, twenty-eight million dollars has been raised for Children's Medical Network, and it started at Royal Oak. The IHOP, Trinity Restaurants is one franchisee of the year twice in the IHOP brand, most recently in two thousand fourteen. That may not mean much to, you know, those that aren't in the restaurant business, particularly in the franchise world, but it's a significant achievement. We are not perfect. We are in a people business. We manage people and do our best to train and instill in them the customer service standards that we preach and hold them accountable for, but it's not perfect. It's people business on the customer side as well, so it's always dynamic. But we strive, we have good people, and they're doing their best every day to deliver a good experience for the customer. So thank you for letting me tell you a little bit about Trinity. If you haven't been into an IHOP recently, this is, this is the new look, and this is very similar to what you're going to see here in Troy. I'm trying to capture a couple pictures of recent projects. But it's not like the old restaurant in Royal Oak. The new stores have, you know, more intense architectural design where we can do more things. We attempt to do those. So there's an example of a store, I think that's in Monroe. We're good at renovations, we think we're good at renovations. One of the things that we try to do, there's, there's obviously a number of components to renovating a project, but one of the nice things is you get to repurpose buildings that are perfectly good buildings. I'm from California, born and raised here in Michigan, but I live in California now for about thirty, thirty-five years. We don't build with a lot of cement block and a lot of steel trusses. Everything out there is stick-built. So when I came out here and started looking at the buildings that we were able to adopt for IHOP in these projects, you got a lot of CMU block, a lot of steel trusses, a lot of, a lot of the stuff that you guys are familiar with. The nice thing about those things, they don't, they don't really deteriorate too much, although I've seen some that have been a problem. But the ones that we've been able to convert have converted nicely. There's a sense of, you know, I don't know if it's pride, but at least satisfaction of that. We're not throwing these buildings into the landfill and then putting, again, CMU block and steel trusses back up again just to make a convenient change or something like that. This is a project, it was an old Indian restaurant on Novi Road in Novi. I share these with you. If you have friends or folks that are connected with the Novi Planning Commission or Planning Department, we're proud of what we did. We did what we said we were going to do. This is one project where we converted an old restaurant into an IHOP. This was probably the ugliest building I've ever had to deal with. This was an old Lone Star Steakhouse, which was something else prior to that. Thing that was difficult is these columns here and here, the footing, those are solid CMU, and the footing on those columns is deeper and bigger than the footing on the building itself. How do you repurpose something like that? We did the best we could with what we got. Not the best picture. At nighttime, it's a rubric picture because you get a lot of shadows and a lot of lighting effects. This was a store in Canton. Again, proud of what we were able to do with the city of Canton, trying to take a building that literally had sat abandoned for twelve years and had been underutilized for probably twenty. Again, trying to work with what we had, this is a block building. I don't know what you call this, but I call it the mullet, the mullet haircut on. We tried to cut those way up and took advantage of what we could work with. advantage of what we could work with. There's another. This would be on the inside. This was an interesting store for, this had a drop ceiling in here, which didn't fit because the windows were too high and the ceiling was too low. So they had all these like transitions on a drop ceiling. I didn't know what was above the drop ceiling until we bought it, and we found that. Post and beam, a building you could never build today, at least on a small retail project. So we simply opened up and took advantage of a beautiful structure. Probably one of the prettiest buildings we've had a chance to work with. This is our most recent opening. This is in Flint. There was some discussion about this Flint area, I think last time I was here. This is actually on Miller Road, the infamous Miller Road and all of the activity out there. But I wanted to show you what we did, again, with a block building, steel trusses. This is a rather, kind of a local favorite restaurant, but it had fallen on bad times, and this is what we were able to do with it.
What was it before?
Savatini's, I think it's called. I think there might have been a few in the area. Food is real good, but anyway, not a pretty project prior. We think we helped the community a lot, and I think, again, the city of that township or the township would be complimentary. So now we find ourselves here. When I was first brought to this site, it was actually two years ago, last month. And I remember walking onsite and trying to figure out, what am I missing? This is a great piece of real estate, as you all know. We tried to come into this market almost a decade earlier. I think the Wagon Wheel was the restaurant on the corner. It's now the Hooters.
It was the Hooters.
What was it? Oh, it was the Hooters.
It was empty now.
Oh, was it really?
That's a quarter week ago.
Oh, my gosh. Well, we tried to, we knew enough about it, and we wanted to be in Troy and had even looked at that. When that was, it was for sale, I think, before they closed it. And it was a little early in our evolution of our firm. We couldn't pull it off at that point. But we knew we wanted to be in this area. When this project was brought to us by one of our brokers, I came out here and I thought, what am I missing? This is a primary piece of real estate in a great community. There's something about this story that doesn't make sense, especially when the seller of this property was a developer. So I listened and I looked at his design plans and some of the, you know, some of the issues that I would normally look at. And I came to conclude, and I could be wrong, and I'm not trying to be preachy here, but the only thing I could conclude is that the problem with this piece of real estate was the basis. The basis in the real estate was the problem. It was too expensive for a developer to buy it and then deal with all of the other constraints that we all deal with in the development, setbacks, landscape ratios, parking requirements. Those were the problems that this guy, this developer, who was not unsophisticated by any means, couldn't overcome. And so why is it different for us? He's a developer and we're a developer. Why is it different for us? The difference for us, and I think it's unique to this particular piece of property, is that I get to operate and occupy what would be the equivalent of an anchor position. And unless you have another developer that can come alongside and make that same kind of fit, I think you have a problem here. And if I'm wrong, you know, like I said, it's an arguable point. I'm trying to make an opinion I'm showing with you. But if I'm wrong, then why would this wonderful intersection stay underdeveloped and almost vacated and darn near abandoned for the better part of a decade, and underdeveloped for sure for the better part of two decades? So I think we have a unique opportunity here. That's why we're happy to be here today, because we think it's a good blend. We're trying to give you a good project. I think when I met with you folks a year ago, two years ago this coming February, it was my first time we introduced the project, we said, look, we all have certain constraints, but we're going to try to deliver a project that is akin to Big Beaver, not necessarily Rochester Road. I know there's overlays for both, but we didn't look to the overlay necessarily on Rochester. We went to Big Beaver and tried to find projects of that quality, that kind of design, and thus you have the project that we brought forward. I guess, again, I just think it makes the point, why did that building stay on that intersection for 20-plus years, and the Tadmex at the same time, just being so inconsistent with the quality of the neighborhood? There were a number of items that Ben had mentioned on the staff report, and I want to talk to him, take them one at a time. The stormwater management, best practices comment. I actually had multiple meetings with my civil engineer, and I am admittedly not an engineer. And as long as I've done this work, I've gotten to know a lot of engineering issues, but this best practices concept of stormwater, I don't totally understand it. So I asked him, I said, you got to tell me, what do these words mean? Are they technical words? Is that a definition that the engineering environment would actually understand or could define for me? And he said, no, it's really just how do you, you know, are there things, modern things that we can do? His response to me was, there's certain constraints on this piece of property. One is, there's some floodplain issues associated with it. And so, but, and I understand some of you might be engineers. I'm going to wade in where I'm going to get dangerous, but we can't adjust the floodplain, is the one comment that they made real clear to me. I thought that if you could, that'd be a good thing. He said, no, you don't understand. It's, you don't want to because it has impact downstream, literally, if not as it relates to the infrastructure around the project. So what, and we had a discussion about this earlier in the week, and I said, look, if there's something we're not doing, or there's an available option to do something other than what's shown, we're totally open to it. We didn't design this to avoid best practices. We just, my engineer doesn't know what could be applied. There might be, you know, the use of some pavers in some of the flatwork, and maybe there's a way to base some of those areas that might allow some percolation of some of the rainwater. But there's, our underground retention or detention is not an option as it relates to the ability to get into the city storm system. There were a number of things that he dealt with, but our engineer did go to the city engineer and pull the records and designed it with the existing conditions. Again, we're not trying to avoid it. We're just not sure what other options exist, and that's from my engineer. The site plan loading accommodations, I can come back to the site plan, but the reality is, I hate to indict codes and zoning criterias, but you can put those zoning, I'm sorry, those loading zone areas into the site plans. They're rarely adopted, usually because truck drivers don't consult site plans and really even know what those blank areas on the site plan are all about. The reality is, in our business, that the truck will pull in and, I didn't put the site plan in here. Would that be helpful?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you very much. The reality is, he's going to pull in here, he's going to pull in here. And the requirements we have with our, with our food delivery folks is that they're not, they're not able to deliver during any kind of a peak period. Peak period, obviously, is an operational peak period, which would correlate to the peak period for parking. Oftentimes, and again, I, we can even stipulate this to our vendors, a lot of times these deliveries are made at night. They're called key deliveries, and they're dropped off at night when there's virtually no parking demand. If we had the ability to put in the parking, or the loading zone, it would be at the expense of parking, additional parking. And as we talked about prior conversations that I've had with you folks, parking was the optimal problem in that realistically, they don't get used, and we needed the parking. So that's the best way I can answer that particular.
And that is a common approach that many restaurants use, but it needed to be clarified for the planning.
Sure, yeah.
I guess you want to go back to your PowerPoint?
Okay, thanks.
What hours do you close?
Well, we're open 24/7 optimally, but it doesn't mean we have demand. In fact, I think one of the questions was, what's our peak demand, or why are we unique to, I think it might have been your question, why are we unique to another restaurant? All restaurants are unique and have a different rhythm to their core. You know, there's restaurants that are peaked at lunch. There's other restaurants that are peaked at breakfast, and then there's dinner houses, which, you know, don't even open some of them until four o'clock in the afternoon. The IHOP model is obviously skewed toward breakfast, and we do about 70% of our revenue before 2:00 in the afternoon on an ongoing basis. And the study that was done with our traffic engineer and with the city's consulting engineer, it wasn't just a review of tables. We actually paid and went out and, at the criteria defined by your engineer, they went out and surveyed three restaurants at two or three days each. I can't remember exactly. But then, before we could even do that, we had to give them sales data for 12 months. So they figured what's peak. They found their data from observing it live, and then concluded the results. So it isn't just simply a table that they went to and said, hey, what is, you know, what does a restaurant typically need? They actually did an extensive study on what the demands was for IHOP.
Can I piggyback on that? We haven't scripted this. It's just, this was a fascinating application for parking. So our consultant chose the restaurants, the three restaurants. They gave us the receipt information, and our consultant chose the days and the times. So it was a partnership to really kind of hone in on, you know, the parking questions. It was a unique approach, a very thorough approach, and a very time-consuming approach.
You know, you're reminding me, in fact, how did they pick those stores and times? It was because we gave them sales data by week, 52 weeks, on all of our restaurants. So you're right. And then they looked at that and said, well, this restaurant seems to be whatever the characteristics you're looking for, and this is their peak, so they studied those days. Yeah. Yeah, it was pretty thorough. I have rooms of data to show you if you'd like to see.
I have a question now. How'd you land on a sample size of three? If you own, what, about 12 or 16? How'd you land on?
It wasn't my sample size. It was your engineer.
My consultant.
Yeah.
It's the same question then, right? Do you know?
You'd have to, I'd have to ask Steve Deering.
Because it just seems like there's so many other potential data points. So, okay.
Yeah, I don't know. The balance of the items here, the trash enclosure modifications, we apparently, my designers apparently missed some criteria we thought we had, or we've already amended. I don't remember what we sent you. If it was, I think we sent us late, didn't we? We missed your cutoff.
Which?
Trash enclosure modifications.
You provided the trash enclosures, the only outstanding issues that note on the landscape plan, so.
It references a standard from another community.
Got it, sorry. Photometric, we just got it revised today. Again, it would be pending review, but we did miss, the photometric was a little too broad, and it didn't account for building lighting and some of the accent lighting, and then your cutoff point. So that's been submitted as of today. I wanted to talk to you a little bit about colors and compatibility, and I really can't really talk about that one concerning Panda without also reviewing our materials board. We have told Panda Express right from the beginning that there's going to be compatibility. And as I shared with you in my prior slides, talking about my background in doing corporate development, everyone's brands is going to tell you, no, I got to have this, I got to have that. And it's, I'm embarrassed to ask you this of you, but I have to come back and say, look, I told them the city of Troy is going to be concerned about this, and they said, fine, then tell us what they want. So, anyway, I'm a bit of a messenger, but I'm not, I'm not an adversary on this effort. I'm, I'm delighted to find materials and colors that would be both complimentary to both our use and their use. And I don't think they're going to have trouble if you were to condition this approval with specific compatibility requirements. We've chosen a series, as I told you, when I first came here, I looked at your projects along Big Beaver, and I tried to find the best way to adopt materials that were, you know, in concert or at least complimentary to those other projects. So the materials that we have here are solid Brazilian teak that is used, and it's not up in here. We use solid teak for accent and for our sign panel, if you will. Metals that we use are either anodized or Kynar finished, and we've come up with an architectural element on the, do you have an elevation? Probably the one that's just the IHOP, it probably reads best. Can walk through the materials, the application of them.
That one.
That's great, yeah. This building is, again, it's vintage, late 70s, probably early 80s. It's a block wall with steel trusses, steel roof. They apparently loved the view of equipment from, in that era, so maybe it was pretty back then than it is today. But you had no effective equipment screen on this building at all. What we ended up doing, because we've run into these kind of buildings in the past, is rather than, you know, the typical parapet where you're just raising it up or building a screen around the equipment, we'd come up with a screen process of trying to accent the building, take advantage of an architectural design while effectively screening it without, just like I said, putting up a big eyebrow, which, or a big forehead is what I call it when you just raise a parapet for no good reason. So all of that metal up there is Kynar finished, and everything behind it is all galvanized. That's important to me as an operator, and I think it's important to you as a city to understand the durability of the product we're putting up there. I can't stand when you see these wooden fences that you put up on a roof or something even less than that, that just rot away over time and then they become a maintenance problem for you. This is bulletproof, literally. So this is a sample of the Kynar material that creates the thin structure shown here. And again, we're not just trying to hide equipment. We want to accent the building at the same time. The teak is used on the signs and on the underbelly of the overhangs, which is a very rich, very rich look, and it's been real effective. We're showing the use of limestone, a cultured limestone on the wainscot and other elements that are exposed out here. And then above here is a Hardy Becker paneling, oh, use of stone. This is an example of where we think the use of possibly these two materials might be a good fit to get compatibility with the Panda building. And then, they have more of a gray hue, and it's even in Ben's report, that they're focused a little more on the grays. We're a little more earth tone. But a stone like this, I think, can help bring those two projects together and really make them look unique yet not fight each other. And the rest are just kind of colors that we're proposing. That's it on the presentation. Any questions or thoughts?
Mr. Hudson.
You spoke in generalities about the best practices for water, but can you tell me specifically what you intend to do with stormwater in this thing?
Yeah, I can tell you what I've been told. There's onsite, it's designed for a 10-year floodplain. And the, there's a combination of the calculation on the storage underground for the, where the pipes, if you will, the storm system itself, underground storm system. And then there's onsite ponding, and that's designed to the 10-year floodplain.
You say onsite ponding, what do you mean?
Well, it's a combination of two things. It's a combination of ponding in the planters wherever we can, where the grades allow it. We're ponding in the planting areas, although we don't have a lot of opportunity there. And then onsite ponding within the parking lot itself. Principally, there's some back here, and there's some back here.
I don't understand what you mean by ponding.
Surface ponding.
Surface storage.
Yeah.
All right. The water's going to pond. It's going to become.
Yeah.
Inventations, in essence, in your parking lot?
Normal swales, yeah.
Have you considered permeable surfaces parking?
Not to my knowledge. And if that's a best practice that we can consider, we're working.
I'd like to consider something like that.
Yeah, we're not opposed to it. I think Brendan mentioned it to me earlier in the week. It's a thing that my engineer said, didn't offer me, but I'm not opposed to it.
I don't get it.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Is there some way you can pass that board around so we can actually get a little look at?
No, heavy.
It's very heavy.
Yeah.
I'll have to look at it then.
I tried, I was going to even get some rock here, but it got heavy, and I probably won't picture it.
I have a couple of questions. One of them being, you talked about you're not having a loading area for your food deliveries because you don't feel like it's necessary, and that there would be no food delivery during the peak period. But what would, what time of the day would food delivery come, right? I mean, you are adjacent to some residential. I'm sure those people don't want food delivery coming at 2:00 AM, and you're open 24/7.
Right. 2:00 PM is very typical. Of course, by the way, I don't know of any of our restaurants that have a loading zone, just for clarification, but. just for clarification, but 2:00 PM is like 2:00 to 5:00, something like that is pretty typical. We can't, I can't tell you every day it's going to be 2:00 PM on this site, but that's typical. And I will tell you, if they show up early, you know, they had some routing change, we send them away. We don't, we don't let them deliver if it's in our peak period. And I would tell you, most concepts are the same way.
Would you then describe that as normal business operating hours from, you know, 8:00 to 6:00? But food delivery, I mean, I am trying to get your assurance for the people that live around that area that you're not going to deliver in the middle of the night.
Sure. I can tell you, if you condition that I can't deliver within certain periods, I can give that to my delivery guys and make an honor of that. And it's not uncommon, by the way.
And then, let's talk about your trash. There was a comment here in the Carlo Wartman report that you needed to modify the trash enclosures to meet the city of Troy's requirements. Again, you're adjacent to a residential area, this is a gateway location to the city of Troy. I think that your trash should be virtually non-existent to the naked eye. And anybody that drives past your location should never notice your trash. Anyone that lives near your location should never hear the dump truck come and lift up the lids on those dumpsters at 4:00 AM in the morning or 6:00 AM in the morning or 3:00. Again, I mean, it should never be, your trash should not be disruptive, disruptive, not from a visual, an olfactory or any sort of disruptive way that would bother someone's sleep patterns. So talk to me about your trash. What have you done? I want your trash to be beautiful.
Well, well, how do I answer that one? Trash is trash, I guess, is unfortunately, it's never an easy thing for us to.
Before you get into it, could you just point out where the trash container is?
Yeah. They're here and then here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. You know, you raised a couple of questions. One is proximity to residential. We're, we're just, I mean, I can't, I can't tell you tonight that I can condition trash pickup the way I might be able to condition food delivery. But we put them in a way for efficient loading and dumping of the trash. The trucks can pull straight in, which is a critical piece for, for just efficient use of that vendor. And we're, I think the structures have been modified to comport with your standards. So we don't build a.
Our standards are pretty minimal.
Well, let me say it this way. Some standards are, that we've found before, you put a chain link fence up, if you could.
I would consider that unacceptable.
I would too. We're putting in CMU, split face rock. I don't, I don't know what better material to build these things out of. We barricade them with deep pipe bollards in the back inside so that trucks, when they, if they would be careless and hit it, they hit a barricade, they don't hit the block and destroy the block, which is, you know, fairly vulnerable for those big trucks. And we do the best we can to manage it like any other commercial business in a commercial district.
What about your gates? How do you keep your gates closed?
You close them. They're steel gates, they're not, they're not flimsy, they're not fenced, they're not wood. They're steel gates welded in place, heavy duty, big pipes with big hinges so they don't get knocked off.
Are you aware of self-closing gates?
I am not for trash enclosures.
I would certainly recommend that you look into that, definitely. We have so many facilities around the city. You can go by them all the time. You say you close them, they don't close them. And it looks really unattractive.
What about putting a separate door entrance into the trash enclosures where if an employee needs to carry out a trash bag, they can do that without having to open the gates?
We can absolutely do that. And the detail actually might show it. I can't remember what we just sent you, but I think it shows a man door. But yeah, that's a great practice and avoid having applications going.
But it still doesn't solve the problem of disrupting anybody's sleep by having the dump truck come at 4:00 AM in the morning. And I live close enough to some medical buildings that I have had my sleep disrupted very early wee hours of the morning because the dump truck comes. And I don't appreciate it.
Sure.
I've actually dealt with this issue, specifically this issue with her neighborhood. What are the options available to you? Unlike residential pickup, which is mandated, the city selects who's going to pick up your residential trash. For commercial trash pickup, you have options.
Yes.
So when you enter into a contract with the trash pickup company, you can let them know what our concerns are and then you can, you know, contractually require them to pick the trash up between certain periods of time.
Absolutely. And we'll, we'll do that. Might.
I don't think there should be trash pickups after 10:00 PM.
And I don't think it should be certainly before 7:00 AM.
Right.
So we can, we can put it in a condition of residential neighborhood and then you can, you can parlay that to your potential trash pickup person and make it figure it out.
Absolutely.
And while I'm on a roll, Panda Express.
Yes.
You know, you have a unique opportunity here to take what is a very tired site and turn it into something fabulous. And I would suggest that by not requiring Panda Express to be equally fabulous in their choice of materials, will not do the site justice and doesn't get me nearly as excited about it as I could be. Generally speaking, we as a planning commission have had repeated conversations about our lack of enthusiasm when it comes to EPIS. You know, Troy is a fabulous city, it's a great place to live, we have a lot to offer. And we're in a position now where we don't feel like we have to sell ourselves short in order to, or settle for something less than what we really want when the request is reasonable. And, and we feel, I feel like asking Panda Express to step up to the plate and be willing to use some of the more quality materials that you are is a reasonable request.
Totally agree.
So, you know, that's a bit of a sticking point for me. If Panda Express isn't going to do a little better, because I'm certainly not at all enthusiastic in any way, shape or form about a drive through. So, you know, if there's going to be some give and take here, they're going to have to step up to the plate.
Can I just, I'm getting a little nervous. This is a conditional rezoning.
Absolutely.
He has to offer conditions. So we keep talking about, you know, conditioning approval line. We're not going to be, aside from some exceptions of parking deviation, the offer of the, for the conditional rezoning agreement needs to come from the developer. So this Panda Express conversation makes me a little nervous.
But, but don't we as a, this is a conditional rezoning. The planning commission does have the right to impose reasonable conditions under a conditional rezoning, that's what happens always.
Well, I think what you're meaning to say is special use.
Right. We're mixing them. Because this, this whole thing is a little bit mixed, we have a special use along with the conditional rezoning, any, the conditions have to be offered in writing from the developer.
Okay, which part is special use then?
The drive through.
Drive through Panda Express.
So I just want to be clear, so just, I'll just remind everyone here, what's being, what's proposed to be conditionally rezoned is this yellow area here, which is essentially going to be used for parking, essentially. So what the applicant is seeking is conditional rezoning of this parcel and then preliminary site plan review for the changes that's proposed to be made here and special use approval for the restaurant here, which includes a drive through, the drawing through triggers special use. So I think, I think what, you can certainly correct me, Mr. Frame is worried about it or concerned about is there are conditions that are voluntarily offered overall, but this is still special use approval, so there are still special use standards. So we gotta, we gotta frame the special use standards of planning commission in this instance as a recommending body because it has to go to council. But we do have the authority under the special use to require the applicant to meet our standards. But when it comes to conditional rezoning, we, the conditions related to the conditional rezoning have to be conditionally, have to be voluntarily offered by the applicant.
And so the special, and so the special use is the Panda Express building.
Correct.
Yes.
And the drive through.
Correct.
Yes.
Is Panda Express a tenant to this building or will it become an owner of the building?
No, become an owner to the process, yeah.
Okay.
So I heard some suggestions related to architecture. Before we get to the mini grade of any comment, any discussion we have, I just want to remind you of the public hearing.
Right. Let's, let's do this at this point. Are there any other questions from the, okay.
Tom.
Mr. Grant, I guess we'll just take the two questions and then we'll go public hearing and then we'll take some more questions afterwards.
Just a quick one regarding the dumpsters, again. There are dumpsters that are quieter than others. In other words, they have plastic lids, they don't bang when they slam them down. Just a suggestion to make sure when you do purchase those that they are the quieter ones to help the residents. And then the other thing is, I, every morning, I hear this when I, my window's open at night in my house, about an eight mile away, there's a building that has their dumpsters between 4:41 and 4:45. I go to my clock and every time when they bang the door, it's a thing. But they have, also they have this beeping backup sound.
Oh, yeah.
And it's incredible, it's piercing. It travels a mile, absolutely, almost a half mile. And that wakes you up first and the banging really gets you out. So if we could look at those two elements of sound to check the residents, I would appreciate that.
Absolutely. Actually, we can do that.
Ms. Cooper?
In our resolution tablet, we talked about indicate treatment of EPIS on the Panda Express building. I went and looked at the planning, master plan excerpt. There's nothing there that tells me that same, well, I own more ugly, so how do I prevent ugly? And I really think that that Panda Express building, especially when you put it next to the IHOP and the materials on IHOP are so much better. I'm not happy. I don't know. How do we get around that? What's in the master plan that can help me say that this is?
We can come back to the discussion.
Discussion, let's do the public hearing and we'll come back for more questions, more discussions after we let the public comment. This is a public hearing and I will open it up to the public if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item. Please, you can sign up there and speak at the microphone. And you will be given three minutes to speak on whatever you would like to speak on this, on this issue. So if you, if you wish to speak, you can please go sign up on the board. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Andrea. This is Julie. We actually were the board members for the condo complex that is Rochester Commons right at the end of Urban Crest. And we've been, you know, looking at this building for several years. And we're, you know, kind of happy that something's going to be done because it has been an eyesore in our corner. But we do have several concerns. One of them is parking. We have very limited parking in our condos. We have single car garages. Many people don't have storage, so their garage is a storage unit, which leaves each condo with one parking spot behind the garage, which means that our designated 25 or so guest parking is usually taken off every day by homeowners. So our guests typically park in fire lanes, they park on the curbs, they park on the grass, they park, actually on Urban Crest, there's four spaces that people can park. So they park in front of our neighbors on Urban Crest, right in front of their mailboxes so that the mail, the mail person can't deliver the mail. So parking is a huge concern in that area. There's no off-street parking other than four spaces on Urban Crest. So in having that kind of entrance exit there is a little bit onto Urban Crest, we're concerned about the traffic. And, you know, people may come down into our complex and try to turn around. There is no further outlet in our neighborhood, so we do have to come in and out off of Urban Crest. Turning onto Rochester Road at 5:00 o'clock in the evening, sometimes you sit at Urban Crest waiting, you know, until the light turns. It can be several minutes and then you're fighting with the cars that are making right-hand turns on the red light. So you pretty much are risking your life getting in and out of that street on Urban Crest. When I come home from work, I come south on Rochester Road. I make a U kind of in the turnaround and I have to wait for the light to turn and then I have to cut over the three lanes, but I also have to make sure that somebody's not taking a right-hand turn as I'm trying to cut over three lanes. Then I immediately have to break, turn my signal on and turn. There are so many people get rear-ended right in that area because they're right on your tail because they've made the right turn and you're slowing down to make a turn. So you've got people riding you right in. So I just, this is going to be a dangerous intersection. People are going to be, you know, slowing down, trying to go into the, you know, Panda Express. I mean, I envision a line of cars coming in and out trying to fight traffic on Rochester Road. That was, and the other thing is semi-trucks. That was a kind of one of my other thoughts is, as far as semi-trucks, when people move in and out of the condos, it is almost physically impossible. I mean, our school bus can't even turn. Our school bus can hardly turn if somebody's parked illegally to get around, drop the children off and come back out. If you're stopped to get your mail, the mail, she lays on the horn because she can't get past. There's just no room to make a turnaround. So if semi-trucks errantly come down that road thinking they're going to go out and, you know, get out of back way or turn around and come back out down Urban Crest, we've seen trucks get stuck. They've run over our curb, they've knocked our signs over and they've, you know, as they're turning, they've run over the corners of our property. So we don't have enough room for semi-trucks if they do end up down our road. We can barely get moving trucks in there for people that move in and out. So you do have to have a really small moving truck to move, but any of these, you know, 16-wheelers, there's no way, so.
And the entrance to the fire station is right there too.
Yeah.
So I know Troy being one of your firefighters, when there's an alarm, like there was in our unit last Thursday, when they're all coming in, it gets crazy because they're all rushing to the station to go.
To get in the truck.
Fire and it's, you know, they're going to have issues probably getting in and out of that area because that's where they all pull in to go if there's a fire. And they're, and the proposed, it looked like their driveway was right across from where the proposed out is. So I don't know if there's been any studies done on, you know, traffic and how the in and out of Urban Crest would work or if there's a possibility to make that on Rochester Road. But I know Urban Crest is, it's a very heavily traveled little road with not much area.
I mean, there's eighty condos and, you know, there's several condos, more than two people, so, you know, we, you know, and that's the only street. We do have an emergency vehicle access, you know, that's, that does go, I believe is parked in, that was recently paved, but we can't go in and out that way. So there is only one entrance and exit for our community. So we're not able to go out a different, you know, if there's a line on Rochester Road or a line at Panda Express, I don't have the ability to go out a different, you know, a different exit and try to, you know, get around the traffic. So, and one more thing about the dumpsters that you mentioned, you know, I do appreciate that we, for, I've been in the condos for about 13 years now and the fire department used to have a large load lager and I worked evenings a lot of times at the hospital. So Wednesday morning, you know, 5:00 AM, I would hear that load lager come up and get dropped down and it was just ridiculous. And they've since, you know, replaced it to smaller, I guess they didn't need the load lager. So they do have smaller wheeled trash receptacles, so we haven't had to have, you know, dumpster dropping ongoing weekly, so that's been nice. So I know that's, they're too small to have, you know, you can't have, you know, five-wheeled trash cans for a large restaurant, but anyway.
Thank you. I got a question before we go to the next resident, Mr. Savanna. Are you aware of if there is actually proper signage on Urban Crest or if the engineering department has looked into that to maybe add additional signage, no food truck traffic or, you know, this road is a dead end, just, just probably to add that. Just, just probably to add that considering the additional traffic that might come because of this new development?
I can tell you, Mr. Savanna, that there is a sign, there's no outlet.
Okay.
But that's the extent of signage on Urban Crest.
We put that up. We did because.
Okay.
Where is the sign posted, no outlet? As you're getting.
It's right at the intersection of Rochester and Urban Crest.
Right.
Okay. I, I guess if that was not a city sign, maybe.
It's a city sign.
It's a city sign.
At their request.
Because legal pets coming in to come.
So what I'll do is I will, I'll have the engineer, engineer check the road, double check and make sure it's good. This was, this was reviewed by our traffic engineer, our consultant, who would have considered all the items that were brought up. I would say that listening, I heard a couple, splitting up the concern, just looking at the site plan on the area, there may be some opportunities for their association to find some extra parking spaces on site.
I'm gonna just say that they probably will take it whether or not it's offered. I mean, honestly, I, we have people, we have people that get ticketed and they don't care. They still park in the fire lane on the curb on the sidewalk. So if it's there, they will park.
Anyone else wishes to speak before I get, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. My name is Venkatesh and she's Gita. We both are neighbors. Can we please go back to the previous screen?
Which screen?
The one before.
The zoning one, the color?
Yeah. Thank you. We have a much simpler ask here. So we live on the, you know, parked and buildings there, 3102, 3116 and 3130. So east side of the proposed IHOP. So each set of 3142 there, there is a, you know, red mark over there. So all these while, we had a nice trees that would actually block from our homes here. Rochester Road was not visible at all from our homes, but now, ever since, you know, this got planned, all the small trees have been bushes and small trees have been completely cleaned up, which exposed all of the three homes to the, you know, Rochester Road. So request is that, you know, by the time this is completed, we'll have a nice private fence. It's a business to residential separation.
If I may, yes. So the applicant is proposing a mix of, where's the pointer? Sir, the applicant is proposing a mix of a, both a screen wall going along the back. So your property is located in this proximity location, a screen wall as well as a mix of dense evergreen landscaping.
Okay.
On his property. Now he, the property's in north, Mr. Baker can't plant on, no, it's not his responsibility.
Right.
But on his property itself, he's doing both a screen wall as well as a dense, thick landscape of evergreen.
As well as adding parking lot trees.
Yes.
Okay. So I'm assuming they are tall enough.
I can't beat it.
They're planted six feet and they'll grow to full mature height and yours.
Right.
Yes.
Wonderful. As long as that is in the plan, we're good. Thanks so much.
Okay. Thank you. If there's no one else that wishes to speak, then I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the table for further discussion, questions. Ms. Cooper.
About the parking for the condo complex, were there any concerns when that condo complex was approved? I don't know when, it must've been several years ago.
I was not here at the time. I didn't review it. I don't know if Mr. Savanna was here.
Were there, were there concern, concerns?
Yeah.
I think at the time, everyone thought that there was enough parking. There was enough parking for, for residents and guests.
Is there anything that we can do now?
Well, they're not supposed to park in fire lanes and they're, they're, they're supposed to park inside the development. So what I was suggesting, and I don't want to get into a, this is a conversation that I can have with representatives offline. This isn't, this isn't the, but what I was, I'm just looking at our opportunities for, for this, this would be at the cost of the association, not the city, the association to perhaps try to find some parking spaces on site to help alleviate their problems. And I can, I can have that conversation offline.
We hired an engineer to do that, to redesign.
Yes, Mr. Grant.
You know, we were talking about the rather large amount of EFS on Panda Restaurant. How do we work out in a, something, because it is under the special use, how do we work out some kind of special use requirement with the owner of Panda? Now this, the representative here isn't the owner of Panda. So do we, we put that in our, our resolution that, and how do we, in other words, I just need to know the communication once that we have to.
The applicant of records sitting in the audience.
Okay. So we address that person, which is John Baker.
That's correct.
So in that case, I would suggest that, under the special use for that, that the materials are up to the same quality standards as the other building on the site, namely the IHOP, and that the extent of EFS is greatly reduced or nullified entirely.
We can add that as, as one of the conditions.
And that's tied to the special use.
Correct.
Application.
Not the conditional.
Yeah. And one, one quick question too. I didn't see EFS on the IHOP building. Is there any EFS that I missed?
I, I did not catch any EFS.
Mr. Baker, let the record show Mr. Baker's shaking his head.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Can I just pop on a question that Mr. Carl, Mr. Faison had regards to the original parking deviation? I went back and looked at our previous review. They were initially required by ordinance to have 175 spaces. They provide 108 at that time. So that's a parking deviation of 67 spaces. Now they've reduced their required amount to 155 and they provide 120. So that cuts it down to 35 space deviation. So essentially they've cut their deviation in half for what originally was requested.
Okay. Thanks. Ms. Cruz.
I don't know if this is even relevant. I'm just gonna say it anyway. You know, we have that Starbucks at the corner of Crooks and Big Beaver where one can rarely find a place to park. And I sort of feel like a Starbucks is a unique restaurant situation because some people will go in and hang out at a Starbucks and utilize the Wi-Fi capabilities and work on their laptops or whatever their electronic device is or read the paper. But the vast majority of people at Starbucks really sort of run in and out for their coffee. It's kind of a to-go place more than it is a place where you sit and linger and enjoy a meal and, and whatever. And, and so I wasn't involved in the approval of that Starbucks, but I would hazard a guess that when it was approved, the parking seemed appropriate for it. And yet in practicality, on a day-to-day basis, it's virtually impossible to find a place to park. So it, it sort of begs the question for me when it comes to a place like an IHOP, while it may have peak hours, it still is a place where people do go in and get served a meal. I mean, you can expect that they're going to be there longer than what it takes to grab a cup of coffee and we're in an efficient parking situation. And so while it may be all well and good in theory, when it comes to the practical day-to-day aspect and use of it, doesn't really work. I mean, I don't know. I don't know. All, all I know is that, that I can think of the Starbucks and I can think of the other restaurant in town that seems to have a parking issue is that La Sage that's on the corner of Crooks Road and Maple Lawn. I mean, there's been plenty of times I've tried to go there for lunch and drove around the parking lot twice and then turned around and left. And it's sort of a mixed-use building, right? It's got the chiropractic place and a couple of office buildings and, but for a meal, you know, if you want to go there for, for lunch at La Sage, the practicality of getting the parking space doesn't exist, even though it works on paper. So I, I, I'm just saying, it's something to think about. I, I don't have the answers, but, but I noticed there are times when we meet parking requirements and yet they still don't work.
Yeah. If, if I can just share my, my thought on that. What I heard the applicant present tonight was a very in-depth empirical study on the, on their peak hours. And I think they went above and beyond what, what we've seen most applicants do in terms of their actual parking requirement, parking need. So it sounded like the, the, the actual company that went out and did the study, they not only looked at the empirical numbers, not only looked at their sales data, but they actually went out and, and did a study in the field to actually observe if the numbers matched with the actual customer peak hours that were showing up at the three restaurants that they, that they actually studied. So I, I hear your concern that sometimes what's on paper isn't really what's out there. But what I heard the applicant do was they actually tried to confirm that their customers showing up are actually matching up with what's on paper, the theory and the empirical data. So, yes, Mr. Savanna.
So I would, I would agree with both of you. I think my success rate at Starbucks to find a parking space is probably like 70%, 75%. And I know where to park in, in the event that they can't find space there. You learn the tricks, right? I know you go there a lot too. So you learn, you learn the tricks. So one thing that would have helped that situation was we required cross-access with the, with the property to the north at the Starbucks, but we never got reciprocal cross-access connecting the Starbucks to the Einsteins and that development to the north. That, that, that has never happened. So that cross-access and that shared parking between the two, I think would have, would have alleviated that to an extent. In, in this instance, you're correct about the, I agree with you about the, this is an empirical study. We did not require a parking study, as I recall, for the Starbucks. Hindsight's 2020. Hindsight's 2020. In this event, there was a lot of time, a lot of money, a lot of effort and probably a lot of money expended by the applicant for, to get, to get this right. And there's also that element of the shared parking that the Starbucks does not have. So I think, I think that give and take, that helps to alleviate, I'm not a traffic expert, but we're, we're confident based on the amount of time that went into this that, that this is going to park. And there's not a lot of opportunity if it, if it, well, it's, it's going to park and we, we've proven that even at peak, there's, there's a space left. Sometimes, sometimes you have to search a little bit to find parking space. Being able to park it and being able to conveniently park it are not necessarily the same thing. Sometimes like you're at the mall, so there's no parking, plenty of parking, you just have to walk, you know, to the back of the parking lot to find the space.
Ms. Crowe.
I raised it before. I'm with Karen's because I'm concerned about the park and I'm concerned about the limited sample size, concerned about the residents to the east because we heard their concerns at, at the last meeting and the limited parking space that they have. And even with the work that was done, one extra space is like a small margin. And there are, there are alternatives, aren't there? Like footprint of the building, with some of the adjustments that they had made to get from the 70 or 67 space variance down to where they are today. So, I mean, at a minimum, and I'm not an engineer or a statistician or anything like that, at a minimum, I, I'd like to understand what the other IHOP restaurants that they own, what those statistics show, and would they be consistent with what we saw from the, the three that we saw.
Ms. Rentsch.
I would like the commission to consider adding to the resolution where the planning commission recommends the following site plan design considerations added to it, the use of permeable materials in the parking areas.
This might be my last comment. I know I'm not being quiet tonight. I do want to let the applicant know, and I do just want to make the comment that we as a planning commission so appreciate when our applicants come with really nice three-dimensional colored drawings that lay out for us nicely what a site is going to look at because you're dealing with a body of people where we have diverse backgrounds. Not everyone is an engineer, not everyone is an architect, although we have them on our board. As someone with a legal background, I look at your little pictures up here of your two restaurants and that's all I have really to go on. It would be so much nicer if, if I had, yeah, I, I, I'm just telling you that, that doesn't, that doesn't help me much. It doesn't help me much in my decision-making process in terms of how I can visualize what that site is going to look like once it's complete in relation to what surrounds it and the scale in relation to the other buildings around it, or even what it might look like if I park in your parking lot and walk up to the front door and, and come and enjoy a meal there with my family. It tells me very, very little about what I can expect when the project is finished. So, you know, we just appreciate it when our developers and our applicants bring us some fabulous three-dimensional and color, colorful drawings. We've had some that have come in here with slideshow presentations and videos and, you know, we want popcorn with that. I mean, that's exciting. So just as a, as a note.
Ms. Rentsch.
Well, in contrast with that, I would, I don't want popcorn. I think in my estimation that we, this is a marked improvement over the last plan we saw. And while I still have really grave concerns about the use of EFS, and I think we can put that in the special conditions, since that's a special use, that we want, I, I personally, I would like that, that stone and the other gray metal, I think that would be much more compatible with the, with the IHOP building. I think I'm, I'm not as concerned about the parking.
Okay, can I just? Why not?
Because we have parking consultants who have said this is, this is, this is acceptable.
So you're accepting the.
I do accept their expertise. I, are you, are you a parking expertise? I don't have that.
No, no, no. You know.
That's the reason I, I'm willing to accept it.
I appreciate the fact that several commissioners discussed the stormwater management. Quite honestly, I feel a little disappointed that the engineers in here would design the stormwater system on the site to explain, you know, what, what lack of improvements he may have been able to do for a stormwater. And Mr. Hudson obviously suggested permeable pavement, which is a good offer, but I do think some other provisions could have been made other than just storing water in the parking lot to provide for the stormwater management on the site. And, you know, you can store rain gardens, you can have sites around the area for stormwater infiltrations as well. Just to say that there aren't, this is a unique site, there aren't many opportunities here to me isn't really a good, a good option. And, but I do, you know, I wish at some point, I, I would want to leave the project for moving ahead. I think the engineer always gave more insight into the site by the same, there's no other options available for any stormwater management. I support Mr. Hudson's recommendation.
Ms. Rentsch.
And follow up to Mr. Faison's EFS. Where would you put these rain gardens without eliminating parking spaces?
Well, where, where the islands are and where the, around the outside of the site where instead of having elevated areas, have depressed areas and allowing the water to get to a trickle. And I don't see these, any storage, underground storage. I say maybe that the pipe is large enough along. I say maybe the pipe is large enough for Rochester Road, it doesn't need any, more detention. But I think any type of new filtration would really benefit the site. And I would encourage you to look at that in the future.
Ms. Cooper.
Was, I know, I agree with Mr. Edmunds that it's a marked improvement from the last one. But when I look at those two pages or three pages from the master plan and what it says about what this stretch of road should look like, Rochester Road is such an eyesore and that's supposed to be the Green corridor, I.
I missed over.
Yeah, and I don't know, it says Rochester Road will play an important role in the citywide initiative as a regional showcase for, like, where is that? And I'm just, I'm really struggling. I don't know. Did we not give them the direction last time?
Wait. There's many ways to look at the master plan. I mean, the first element is they are taking a site that is currently underutilized and as some have deemed an eyesore, and they're making, we find significant improvements to the site. They're adding a significant amount more landscaping on the site than currently exists. And they have, you know, the stormwater is a very, it's a very valid issue that we've mentioned twice in our report at the applicant, you know, makes a condition, it should be a condition of approval to address. There comes a question at what point, you know, will the site ever read it out? You know, and, you know, and we think the applicant's done a very nice job of trying to incorporate some significant improvements to the site with the plan that he submitted. Again, we do have some issues with the building, the Panda Express building. But in terms of the other requirements of the master plan, we do find he has met most of those requirements. You know, he's putting a nice decorative element on the corner of Urban Crest and Rochester.
Repurposing an existing building is a best management practice, although not specifically a stormwater best management practice. It certainly saves a lot of material from going into the landfill. Do I wish that we had an application before us that had more stormwater best management practices? Yes.
And with use.
And I think the applicant is sitting here taking notes and has indicated to us that he will consider some creative stormwater management improvements and, you know.
I'd like to take exception. I don't see anything on any of these plans towards stormwater management. We've had some words here, but there have been no plans. We don't know.
No, I didn't say that there weren't best management practices. I said I wish there were some best management practices.
If it was best management practice, I'm talking about stormwater management practices now. And it's going to be void, as far as I'm concerned, on this plan. I have no knowledge of anything in there. We heard some nice words, but I've seen nothing on a site plan.
Did this site flood in the past when it was the old site?
I have no idea.
Well, he did say that the engineering department worked on it.
Our engineering department, the easiest way is to stick with the normal instead of being imaginative.
Did our engineering department review the approval of the applicant's engineer in terms of calculation for stormwater management, adequate stormwater detention of what's there existing?
Yes.
So that was approved with existing site as is, even without any improvements? If the city engineering department and the applicant's engineer actually ran the numbers.
Don't misunderstand my statement. There's engineering with the engineering department for stormwater management that certainly doesn't fit the mold of our master plan. We're talking imaginative stormwater management. And Mr. Senzika says rain gardens. We talk about ponding in our building, we've got a pond also. And if there's a good rain, you can't park for half the parking areas for at least half a day because that little hole really slows down the management. And I'm thinking if we had a big rainstorm here, I don't know if the IHOP customers would like to swim through the water after the site had parked there and what I'd eat.
Ms. Cruz.
I didn't hear anyone here at the table tonight say specifically that they're opposed to having the IHOP there or the Panda Express, that, and that we like the idea of the site being improved. But what I have heard tonight is that, you know, we have concerns about design materials that Panda Express proposes to use, that we are, we have concerns about stormwater management and best practices and using vision and innovation in solving these problems. We've talked about concerns with respect to the trash enclosures and what it is that they are prepared to do to keep disruption to the neighbors minimal. We've talked about food delivery times and we've talked about parking concerns. That seems to me to be a pretty long list of stuff to make a decision on. I almost wonder if we're not better off to let the applicant come back and address in more detail what these concerns are. I mean, I think they're all things that we can reach an agreement on. But as Ms. Dufrain pointed out tonight, under our code, the applicant needs to come back and offer some of these solutions. It can't just come from us. So, I mean, I would almost ask that maybe we should, we should table it with this long list of concerns that we have instead of trying to rush through a decision. I don't want to necessarily see the project fail, but I'd like to see it done well.
Mr. Savadon, are any of these conditions that Ms. Cruz listed here, they're a longer list of wish, the wish list that we would like to see, can be resolved for the final plan approval? Or is this something that you would prefer that the applicant look at and come back to us with the questions answered and with every guy's plan?
Well, I mean, we can, we can, the planning department with assistance from the planning consultant can go either way. I mean, we, I think, I think none of these are insurmountable, but there's certainly, for some of them, there's a bit of a leap of faith on behalf of the planning commission, particularly with the issue of the elevations for Panda Express. We can, we're here to assist the planning commission, but we think we need some more direction certainly moving forward with the elevations.
I guess I'd like to hear more from the commissioners, what, how do we, what direction do you want to take this? Do we feel comfortable of letting the planning department internally accept all these changes and review them and approve them? Or would you like to have these come back before us with whatever proposal, whatever's being proposed by the applicant? In terms of even the changes on the Panda Express building and in terms of how much permeable surface they're proposing and where? How would you like to move forward with this? What's the consensus in terms of what you feel comfortable doing?
Ms. Cruz.
Personally, for whatever it's worth, I have full faith and credit in our planning director and our consultant. I think that, you know, we've had enough conversations with them as a body that they know what it is that we're after. I also recognize that the only way that we're going to get what it is that we've talked about tonight and have our concerns addressed is how we draft the resolution. I mean, the crafting and the drafting in that resolution is going to be paramount. And I'm not, you know, maybe Mr. Hudson's a better lawyer than I am, but I'm not so sure that I can craft something on the fly that is going to really be as comprehensive as we need it to be.
Thank you, Karen. I am a better lawyer than you. Well, I agree with you with that. I don't think we can do this on the fly tonight. I think that we'll take a little time to consideration and setting forth in a revised resolution what our concerns are before we give it to the city council.
I mean, wording is everything.
So, that's fine. You're the planning commission, you're the body responsible for making your recommendation. I want to make sure though that we have the potential to come back reasonably quickly and that the applicant has clear direction for the planning commission. I think he's a pretty bright guy, he's sitting here, he's paid attention. But I don't think we've given him very clear direction on the elevations.
Well, I agree, but I think we can do it quickly. And maybe if we adjourn this a week or two, Ms. Dufrain and Mr. Savadon and our consultant can craft a little more detailed resolution reflecting our concerns and bring it back.
Well, what I would, if it's the pleasure of the planning commission to postpone this, my guess is Mr. Baker is going to want to address as many of these as possible so that there's a shorter list versus a longer.
That'd be great.
So, example, he's going to want to come with a, I'm not trying to speak for you, John, but he's going to come with an elevation and a design for the dumpster, for example, that alleviates the concerns of the planning commission. He's going to come with an elevation drawing that is improved over this, et cetera. He's going to come with some ideas for stormwater best management.
That'd be a great idea if we could do that.
Ms. Redmond.
I just want to, you talked about the stormwater management bothers me too. I don't want to see puddles as a solution. That just seems absurd to me to have ponds during the rain, a heavy rain, and then hours later it's still ponds and people can't park. Is it because we don't have underground, what are we relying on for stormwater removal from the property? Is it the city system or is it a, is it individual dry wells or, you know, how's it being handled? I just don't understand why we're going to have puddles.
Well, our engineering, just, I'm speaking in general, okay? Not necessarily this site. Our engineering standards allow for surface storage of up to eighteen inches of water.
Wow, yikes.
There are places in the city where in a heavy rain event, if you park in the wrong spot, you open your door and you're aware of what's going on.
That's my building.
You're stepping in a foot and a half of water.
Absolutely. Wow, I didn't realize that. The other thing, as I want to mention, at one of the breakout sessions at our last conference, a particular, I mean, planning director or engineer, I can't remember who, gave a talk about permeable surfaces. And one of them was the permeable asphalt. They found after a year or two, the permeability disappears. They fill up with junk, you know, dirt, and it doesn't work after a few years. So the idea of, yeah, oh, let's put in permeable asphalt, maybe not work. So if we don't, if they do look into that kind of a surface or parts of it as that kind of surface, it's got to be something better than permeable asphalt. That's all I'm saying.
We will make sure that whatever Mr. Baker comes back with in terms of best management practice from stormwater will also be reviewed by the engineering department to make sure it does work for a best management practice too. So we won't be reviewing that on our own.
So I think Ms. Cruz reiterated the list fairly clearly of the items that we would like the applicant to address and look at. Would you like to read that list off again? I mean, the architecture of Panda Express and materials.
And the design, and the design materials. We talked about the stormwater and best practices for the stormwater detention. We talked about the trash enclosure. We talked about the time of the day, the enclosures themselves, the gates, having a man door, what kinds of lids that we want to use and hinges. We talked about food delivery times and making sure that wasn't disruptive to the surrounding neighborhood. And then we had a list of parking concerns and whether or not the deviation was really practical given the size and the seating for the restaurants and the parking study that had a component.
Mr. Carla.
Who's her name?
Yes, Ms. Redmond.
Can we get on the last one there? Does, is there a majority of the planning commissions who really have, who are not willing to accept the OHM recommendation on a parking deviation? I'd just like to know, is the majority of the commission? Because I do accept them.
Can we get any comments from those who are not comfortable with the results of the study? Personally, I am confident in the engineering study and that's their expertise. They made a study. The results are empirical, they're data-driven, and I, we need to, we need to feel confident in studies given to us from the experts in the field and personally do. So if there's anybody that actually doesn't feel comfortable, now is your chance to actually explain why you are not comfortable.
Okay.
Go ahead. I've talked a lot.
Again, there's only three data points, right? And so I'm not suggesting that we have to do whatever exhaustive study was done for those three for the other twelve or however many other IHOPs are in the state. Or other IHOPs that are closer to this one. But I'd just be curious to see the statistics of the peak parking demand for more. But there's only, it's only three.
Three locations.
It's only three.
Three locations that were very similar to the one that's being built. Yes.
But how, I mean, so the one in Monroe, right? There's one in Monroe, which seems to be a very different community than Troy.
No, I don't think so. I don't think we're so unique that we're not similar.
Are you suggesting you would, you'd like to actually look at the data itself?
No, I didn't know if there's a summary. There's a summary in this that shows peak demand for the three restaurants. And it, yeah, if you could go to that, that's the, that's.
That's the summary of all.
Yeah, I, no, if you go further, further.
That's the three locations.
Yeah, yeah, so maybe that one there. So, if you look, Novi, the adjusted peak is fifty-five point three four average per seat. Monroe is nineteen point oh nine per seat. And Roseville is twenty-one point one two three. So there seems to be like significant variance between those, right? So I, again, I'm just curious, is that what we would see if we looked at others? Just that? Because if it's not point oh nine, right, in Monroe, if it's point three four, like in Novi, I think you come to a different conclusion. But I could be wrong. So I don't know. Maybe a conversation between me and Bill would satisfy me. But I'm just, you know, and I'm not questioning his capabilities or the department's capabilities, it just. Yeah, the numbers look odd to me.
So the simplest way that I know how to communicate or articulate my objection is numbers tell a story, and they always tell us a story. But numbers are only part of the story. They're never the whole story. And so while I'm not doubting the formulaic method by which OHM has done their traffic study, I'm just telling you that's just part of the story. There's a whole lot of other variables that exist when it comes to restaurants, malls, shopping classes, parking, and predicting how people are going to behave. So, yeah, I don't discount that, but it's just part of the story. And we're talking about a significant parking deviation, not just a few spaces.
Right. If I can shed a little bit of light to kind of maybe add a little bit of insight to that. I mean, there are national manuals that are used for these, for traffic impact studies, for peak studies. And these manuals actually take into consideration thousands and thousands of locations nationally that are used for, per use, if it's a restaurant, if it's residential, if it's commercial, if it's office. And I think these consultants, they actually use these manuals in, in using the factors and using travel and using peak hours of customers at certain locations. If it's a hospital, I mean, these manuals are actually used in the behind, the scenes of calculation. So I trust that OHM and other consultants that bring data before us, that they're the professionals and they actually know what manual to use.
Right. And again, I don't, I don't discount that, but I've given you two examples tonight about restaurant parking that, or the Starbucks parking that is insufficient. And I can tell you that I never realized at Somerset Mall how insufficient the handicapped parking was until my husband had a knee replaced. parking was until my husband had a knee replaced. And we would go to the mall and we could not find a handicap spot in which to park. And I'm sure that OHM or whomever used all of these data points in determining how a mall, the size of Somerset, and the traffic that was expected compared to all the other malls in the country, and blah, 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 how many handicapped parking spots that they would need. And then when I needed one, it wasn't there. So, numbers tell a story, but it doesn't tell the whole story, and this is a big parking deviation.
I guess if we would request the applicant to provide additional data, I don't know if they would provide anything else than what we were provided already in terms of what their consultant gave them and what the city approved. Is that, can you shed some light on that, Ms. Cruz?
Not really. I know that the applicant's consultant and our consultant spent a lot of time working on this, and I think it's an empirical study, and I think it's probably the best we're gonna get.
Right. Ms. Cruz. I'm sorry, Ms. Cooper.
We've talked so much alike. Why?
In fact, I just kind of know that you might.
Oh, we're so picky. I don't know. I'm thinking about a word, but. I was gonna say, I do trust a professional, because that's what you paid them extra money for. What I don't trust is that I understand what that professional has provided us. So, just as we had, do you remember when Ms. Blue, for me at ZBIA, Alan Motzney and Lori Gregg Bloom did a presentation on, like, how the, and I think they came and did that here one night when I was not here. Can we get the traffic department to come and do a presentation or somebody to come and educate us about?
Answer our questions.
Yeah, answer some of our questions, because I, as, I think each of us in our own professional lives, we don't touch parking except when we don't get a spot and we get frustrated about it. I've had knee surgery, I understand. Maybe we need to readjust those numbers over time because we have an aging population now, just like we need more homes for the elderly here. So, maybe we expand the number of handicapped, I don't know. But maybe we have someone come here and teach us or answer our questions.
Is she questioning for like a prime room parking?
Yes.
Okay, we can, in the future, we can do that.
Okay. Because this seems to be a repetitive issue for us as development plans come in, that we are not confident, some of us have more questions than seems normal, and we talk a lot about parking.
So, I'm also paying attention to the dialogue, and I think a solution, Mr. Sherman, it seems to be, show of hands who thinks parking is an issue? I think I, two hands are in the air, three hands are in the air. I could talk to Bill Houdary, Bill Houdary, our traffic engineer, see if we can get something, an explanation of this deviation from our consultant. Perhaps Mr. Baker can bring his consultant to the next meeting to explain this. I think this is at a point where it needs people that are a heck of a lot smarter than myself to explain, because this isn't what I do. So, this is way out of my ability to explain. So, I think we're at a place where this is explainable and this can give people a comfortable level.
I agree with that. Yes, Ms. Edmonds.
Just a couple other questions in my mind. When you show up the projection of the three, the whole site, it shows the roof completely bare. So, you're not gonna have any rooftop mechanical equipment at all? Yes or no?
Of course we will.
Well, that wasn't shown in there.
Yeah, that's from the ground.
It looked awfully clean.
From the ground, you won't see anything.
All right, all right. So, that would be even higher?
That's what the screen wall at Brades is also designed to do.
The screen wall.
Yeah.
Along the curve?
Yeah.
Of the roof?
Yes.
And then the other question I had related all this, is the old brick gonna, are you just gonna demolish the old brick off of the old building?
We'd actually.
Or is this gonna be a facade?
Vineyard, yeah. Yeah.
Thank you. So, the list, and I don't think any of these are, is or not, I think they're all valid concerns and valid issues. Related to, I keep going back to the architecture just because I want, I think that the planning commission's been very clear on everything so far except the architecture. I did hear a comment about the proportion of material that was comprised of EFS and the desire of the planning commission to reduce that. Is there any more clear direction that we can provide on that?
My comment was utilize the same materials as on the IHOP.
With similar compatible materials.
Yeah.
Do you have enough information to go back to you?
Yes. I do. And if I may, I will bring the traffic engineer in, apologize for not doing that. Prior, there was two studies actually performed. One did rely more on tables and one was more on empirical, they both tell.
And how about Mr. Sanzeca's suggestion about we have the.
And we will.
Stormwater.
So, we'll be here. Yeah, we'll come back to her, apologize.
And I guess we're ready to just table this and we, everything's clear in terms of the direction that we're giving the applicant on the items to address. Do you have those items or is that, we still need to actually?
I think.
Give more specific.
I think a motion to postpone with the reasons, the information that we're seeking.
Okay, we can do that. Would somebody like to make the motion?
Yeah, I'm making a motion to postpone with the, so the applicant has time to address all the issues we brought up tonight.
Can we be more specific, the actual issues to be addressed, Ms. Cruz?
Okay. I can reason. Number one is the, on the architectural materials for Panda Express should be the same or very close to the same as on the IHOP restaurant. Possible, oh, the stormwater management is a big question as far as how, how can the applicant be more creative in handling stormwater? We've mentioned some options as far as bio swales and other things in those green areas. The trash enclosures, basically, the important things were that the materials for the enclosure themselves, I think the applicant can explain those fairly well, but the time of trash pickup, I think, is more critical than anything, that there's some kind of, he can get some kind of agreement with his trash collecting service that it's not during sleeping hours, normal sleeping hours.
Well, let's be more specific. Let's say, well, no pickup after 10:00 PM or earlier than 7:00 AM. That's what Karen said.
And can we impose that, Ms. Lawyer?
Can I stop answering that? Can you correct me? So, I heard you, I think what you wanted to say, that these conditions that we're mentioning were tied to special use approval that's sought by the applicant, correct?
Yes, specifically.
Okay.
All right, then I'll continue. That the, that the trash containers themselves have quiet lids, I'm not specifying necessarily plastic, but other materials that are quiet so that when they are closed, they don't make noises. That the, yep, the, there's a, an access door for men or women to access the trash enclosure without having to open the large gates. And also that the, you know, in my personal, again, I'll add this, as somebody I mentioned earlier, that the trash pickup during those hours, even if whatever the hours we specify is from later than 10:00 and no earlier than 7:00 AM, that if they utilize in reverse gear, backing up, that the piercing noise, I realized we've got, they can during those hours.
Those long-winded resolutions in history, Mr. Edmond.
I don't think they can turn them off. I think that's a federal.
All right, I'll let that one slide. Food delivery times are to be during, again, daylight hours and that they, that they bring in their traffic consultant to help educate us on.
And their civil consultant.
And the civil engineer.
And their civil engineer, both engineers, so that we have a clear understanding of why we should allow for them to have deviation, especially in the parking. Is that okay?
I think he's got direction now.
She can add to it.
And notice that this is not set to a specific time, so if, it's possible he could be back before us in two weeks if he can get us.
Oh, oh, oh. I do have one more thing. If you can bring, if you could bring some bigger, nicer drawings, just to give us an idea of how lovely it will be once the project is completed, that would be most appreciated.
Yeah. If there's one thing I need clarification on, it would be that. I understand everything else, but other than a rendering, a three-dimensional rendering, what would you have in mind?
You know, that, I think, would be sufficient if you could just have a nice, three-dimensional, colored rendering. Ideally, you know, you would show us how it fits in, that the scope and the size fits in with the surrounding area.
I guess more views, a different views from different angles of this.
It's just, it's so tiny, right? I see so.
Can you zoom in?
So much of the, I mean, like, the buildings are tiny. They're not gonna be that tiny, is what they're looking like in that picture. And I'd like to see something with more detail. I'd like to see something with the closer, you know how they have the closer details, more zoomed in photos sometimes, like of the main entrance and the.
Just bottom.
You're just making me feel now like I'm high maintenance, but I like the 3D colored drawings that really showcase the building itself.
Can we have him to pack it up here, Ms. Saban? Is that actual, I think Ms. Cruz was actually asking.
So, John, could you, could you have your architect give us, so I think what you're saying, give us like something closer on that and then something closer on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have the one on the IHOP building here, but we'll clean up the elevations as you directed on the Panda and bring a rendering on that.
Yeah, and not in, not in architectural drawings that are diagrams, because I don't, I don't enjoy those.
Ms. Edmonds.
I just have one other question in the architect. So, you, your deliveries of food or products, everything to the IHOP, they'll have to be done at the end of the retail building down there?
Yeah, which is not uncommon and not.
And so, they'll truck them all the way around?
There's a walkway in the back of the building.
Oh, there is?
Yeah, with ramps, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think we have, Ms. Cruz, I mean, yes.
Do we have to close the public hearing?
Oh, it's closed.
We're just looking for a second.
I'll say.
Okay, second minute. Ms. Edmonds, are we ready for a vote? Any other comments, questions? I think we have our list.
Mr. Bezon?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yeah.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Sanzeca?
Yes.
Ms. Javedia?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes, the postpone with the conditions and the request for additional clarification information. Thank you. Item number six on the agenda, public comment for items on the current agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak again on the item on this agenda? If there isn't, we will move on to item number seven, planning commission comment. We will start with Mr. Bezon.
Nothing from him.
Ms. Cooper.
I had a lot to say, but it's been a long evening.
So early.
One item.
Close map.
The map conference was phenomenal. I learned so much. I was in seven units of classes for two and a half days in a room with no windows, with 25 other people, and, but I learned a lot. And I was also very impressed with MSU, their extension and the teachers that they had. A couple of them in particular were phenomenal. But, yeah, I was really impressed with our state schools and what they provide as far as training. So, I learned a lot. It's pretty, pretty intense.
Great. Mr. Hurhutten.
I was being facetious when I said I was a better lawyer than Ms. Cruz. I led certain areas and she does, and I didn't mean that anyway. I believe your talents. That's all I've got.
Mr. Krent.
Again, on the map conference, the MAP stands for Michigan Association of Planners. That was phenomenal, gained a lot of insight. One particular one was of, three different municipalities gave presentations on public art and specifically Traverse City, I believe it was, that did an incredible job because they provided new language for their ordinances to guide the city as far as how it's done and all the process. They gave all kinds, great process to get it, get things accomplished. I think at some point we should make some kind of connection with the Troy Art Council. Have them.
Michigan Arts.
Okay. And, and look at, I've got the presentation from Traverse City and all their ordinances. I think we should somehow review that to make sure we don't let that one just slide through the cracks. The public art, I think, is critical for any municipality that wants to be a leader. And that was my big takeaway from that conference.
Ms. Cruz.
I too enjoyed the conference. They do a nice job of, if nothing else, I mean, you always go and you always learn, but if nothing else, when you go, they do a nice job of reminding you why what you do as a planning commissioner is really so very important and how it vitally impacts the community in which you live. And it's a nice reminder of, you know, it's a responsibility that we have. I think one that we all take seriously and, you know, I listen to some of the stories that you hear other people share, and I'm very, very pleased to say that we are part of a community where the planning commission is a well-oiled machine. And I think that we are a cohesive body and, you know, work well together, share our thoughts and our opinions and do so respectfully. And as a result, you know, we're living in a great community and we're seeing great projects. So, I was very pleased to be able to be a part of that.
No comment.
Ms. Edmonds.
No, thank you.
Ms. Edmonds.
Yes, the conference was great. The facility was not as, quite as great, but especially for those who are physically or hand-correctly challenged. But other than that, I thought it was, and it was a really great time to, we had good conversations in the luxury vehicle that you guys got for us to ride up into. I really appreciated that. I attended one session that I thought was really outstanding, and it was Bob Gibbs, who we all know, presenting the Civic Center concept master plan, and I stress concept. And Mark Miller, who did an outstanding job of providing his background as well as his interaction with this whole, the, with the current situation where we have the, where we have the dialogue sessions, I think about eight of them. And I know Brent also attended that same session, and it was really well-received. There were a lot of questions, and I thought our team did a really outstanding job.
Great. Ms. Frank.
Nothing, thank you.
No comment.
Next year's conference will be in Grand Rapids, and it's gonna be a joint annual conference between the Michigan Association of Planning and the Michigan Municipal League. So, I don't believe we've heard, we've ever done that before, so I think it will be very well-attended and pretty dynamic.
Well, maybe Laura will let me go.
We can all go.
With the MML and all, maybe Laura will let me go.
I have no comment.
So, are you taking reservations already?
And talk about a good example of public art.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, no other comments, and we are adjourned for tonight. Thank you.